Welcome, everyone. Let's begin our city council work session for today, which is seventeenth of August, 2021. Kristen?
Good evening. I am actually going to turn it over to Julia. I believe Julie will have an introduction and Erica is going to assist her this evening, I believe. So go ahead and take it away. Yes, can you guys see my screen?
You best.
Awesome. So yeah, we're kind of doing two things tonight. We're going to talk to you about Sherwood West and where we're at right now, and that's going to lead into discussion of the Metro Mid-Cycle Urban Growth Boundary Discussion and hopefully getting direction from council on whether and how to proceed. Come on, I'm sorry. Why are you not going down? Sorry. There we go. Um, so again, the meeting purpose, we're going to provide an update on Sherwood West, remind you of why, why we're looking at it, what we've done to date and next steps. We'll talk about the timing of the criteria for a mid-cycle UGB request and get feedback. So I'm going to turn it over to Erica to touch on the Sherwood West Preliminary Concept Plan piece. Erica, are you there?
No, thanks, Julia. So a little background on the preliminary concept plan. The current concept plan was accepted by council in 2016, and it was prepared prior to any other comprehensive plan work that we've done so far to date, and it didn't really address any of the economic development goals that are new to the city. It primarily addressed housing, parks, and open space, and it addressed smaller commercial retail uses to serve residents in the area. The comp, this, the preliminary concept plan is almost fully compliant with Title XI, which is Metro's concept plan criteria. It didn't address all of the criteria to the fullest degree, but with this relook of the Sherwood West concept plan, we plan to have a fully compliant Title XI concept plan. So next slide, Julia. Um, so we are really taking a fresh look of the concept plan in regards to employment and economic growth, as well as taking a look at updated transportation plans that we have for the area and then new state rules related to housing. And then, once this relook is complete, we hope that it will satisfy all of Metro's Title XI concept planning requirements as well. So here's the project timeline. We have established a technical and community advisory committee to date, and these two committees have met a total of three times since late April. We do have a fourth meeting scheduled in early September, and then we have an open house slated for early October as well. We anticipate that this project will wrap up in late spring, early summer of next year, 2022, and we hope that council, you know, accept this document at that time. Next slide. So just a little background about Sherwood West. So the total area of Sherwood West is just about 1,300 acres. There's 126 properties with a total of 110 property owners, and the average size of parcels in Sherwood West averaged out to about 9.8 acres. So I'm just going to touch briefly on the three meetings that we've had and give you a summary of what was discussed. So in meeting number one, we definitely reviewed the economic goals for the city because we know that it's important to improve the jobs-housing balance in Sherwood. And we also reviewed the findings of the Sherwood Economic Opportunities Analysis. To date, we know that it's not an adopted document, but we know from that document that future employment uses in Sherwood should focus on clean tech, professional technical services, and research and development employment opportunities. And we definitely know that with the rate of annexations and land use applications that are happening in the Tonkin Employment area now, we are seeing a faster rate of development and anticipate that there will be a future need for additional employment lands in the future. So we also touched base on the housing needs analysis and new housing policies and provided an update on House Bill 2001 with the CAC and the TAC. And then we also looked at potential transportation opportunities and barriers in this area as well. So meeting number two, the committee, we reviewed the public engagement plan for this project, and they provided specific input on outreach methods. Then we had a visioning exercise that really focused on what do we want to see Sherwood West to look and feel like in 20 years? So between the first and the second meeting, the planning team, we reached out to several key economic development stakeholders in the region. We spoke to industrial developers. We talked to folks in the healthcare industry. We talked to folks in hospitality. And also talked to regional winemakers and businesses in the areas.
And based-
Erica, if I, if I may, I just wanted to chime in and mention, I believe Bruce coordinated many of them and was at, I think, all of them. So he was really involved in helping us connect with those key stakeholders.
Yes, he was, which is great. So based on those interviews and feedback that we've received, we know that the opportunities for in Sherwood West will kind of have a mixed human, a mixed employment approach, namely industrial, industrial flex and professional offices. And with this information, we really began to look at sites focusing on these types of mixed employment uses and giving consideration to larger flatter parcels in the area that have better access to transportation. Next slide. So meeting number three here, we came back with an updated vision statement for this project, and we really, how it differs from the first vision statement is that we really emphasize the balance of uses within Sherwood West and wanting to create a better housing-to-jobs balance within the community as a whole. And we also integrated more language in here about how we can be better connected to our urban green spaces such as the National Wildlife Refuge and the Chicken Creek Greenway, which is a new concept that we're putting out, that we're putting forward within this plan. So in meeting number three, we also introduced the TAC and the CAC to our six planning concepts, and we went over three of those planning concepts in that meeting. And so here are the six planning concepts on this slide. And at meeting number three, we really focused on our mixed employment areas, green spaces, and active transportation. So come September 8th, we'll be going over neighborhood form, street connectivity, connectivity, and the Elbert Road design concepts. So in meeting number three, we fully explored where these mixed employment areas could be located and what type of uses could be located in these areas. The large area to the north bound by Roy Rogers and Shoal Sherwood and Elbert is relatively flat and could house a large, a large tech park. There is a smaller site north of the high school. It could serve as, you know, neighborhood retail and service uses. Just south of Kruger along Highway 99, there's additional opportunities for flex space or maybe healthcare facilities. And then again, to the south along Highway 99, there's some possibility for warehousing or other uses that could integrate the wine industry and their needs. So we talked about each, each of these areas, the CAC, and kind of got their feedback on what they were kind of looking for as far as uses and chatted about, you know, does this make the most sense for these employment areas spatially on this map?
Erica-
This is Doug's got his hand up first.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I just, I just wanted to add some comments on this particular slide from, that came from the committee meeting. So I think this, what Erica just commented on was what we were, what the committee was presented at, kind of coming into the meeting. I don't think it really captures the feedback from the committee necessarily at that meeting, which was we didn't want to see commercial next, directly adjacent to the high school for one. And then also, we, we had some, some feedback on that southern area that we really don't want to see flex space and and warehouses in there. We'd like to see more something kind of unique and interesting related to travel and tourism. So I, I just wanted to call that out, that there was robust discussion around, around these various areas. I do think the north area seemed to be pretty, pretty general agreement among the committee that, you know, utilizing that big flat space for, you know, for a larger opportunity was, was agreeable to everyone.
Thanks, Tim.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, Doug, thank you very much. I was just gonna basically say the same thing. This is what we're presented, but not necessarily what, what the committee kind of came to in that meeting, but Doug said it perfectly, so I won't add anymore.
Thanks, Tim. Two comments from me, at least on the, you know, the initial sort of conversation on the, I urge the committee to have a robust conversation about what to do with the Northwest Natural Gas Pipeline. Is it gonna, do you need to put a road over all of it, a park over it, parking over it, or a bit of each? Certainly don't want homes over it or within a certain distance of it. And that might impact just what you make different parts of it look like. Yeah. I wouldn't be afraid of going further west on the southern end with with retail, commercial office, commercial type stuff, opportunities. Other comments or thoughts before we move to the next?
Keith, can you just share where that pipeline is? Just for a reminder, I know we've had conversations about it, but-
I don't know exactly where it is. I just know it comes, it goes along Brookman, crosses underneath 99, and then hangs up, hangs a right, going north, and part of it is under the high school parking lot, is my understanding, up on the, up on the top.
Yeah, Northwest Natural, any of those types of utilities are generally pretty careful. They don't want too much detailed information about sizes and locations of their lines. And so it is something that we, it's a very valid and excellent point that we need to make sure that we are coordinating with them and planning around them, but we will likely not be showing you guys a line on a map just because they don't-
But the staff has to know exactly where it is.
Yeah.
And make firm, clear comments of ways of
Yeah.
keeping homes away from it.
Yeah.
And we have to decide, do we want what kind of, what, I mean, yeah, is it the right thing to have, have a road go over it, a park go over it? Or common, or parking lots of businesses? Or a bit of both? We're all three.
It, I just, I would just add, it did come up in the CAC meeting, and it was, it was discussed in the con, because we were having a conversation around developable lake acres throughout that region and, and Julia, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we asked the consultants to incorporate that into the, the study as well.
Yes.
Yeah.
Thanks, Erica. Um, I also recall there being discussion at the CAC about, especially in the southern piece, a little bit more of a, of the tourism, wine industry, hotel kind of slant. Is that correct, Erica?
That is, that is correct. So in the original concept plan, this, this little area, you know, budding highway 99 down there to the south was seen a kind of as a gateway area to the community and, you know, utilizing employment opportunities, you know, that would capitalize on our, our proximity to the wine country. And we definitely heard that is something that the committee would still like to keep.
It doesn't help to have a laser pointer if my fingers won't move the laser pointer. Sorry, guys.
Yeah, but I think the southern piece is too small, just from, but, and just needs to be vetted some more and, and comments of abutting what should be abutting in the high school is, is, are valid and-
Yeah, I think, Mayor, just a couple of calls there. I think that these, I, the shaded areas where the area is brought to us by the consultant, they're by no means meant to be, this is the area that we're gonna, we're gonna focus on. It was just a, it was a starting point for the conversation. So I would expect future maps to have a different orientation. And then in regards to the area north of the high school, what the consultant said was, that really could be anywhere. If they just picked a spot and put it on the map, it was just to illustrate that there could be a small commercial area somewhere, but it could go in any of 10 different places, and that was just the one they happened to choose, so.
Yeah, yeah, I think there's probably opportunities for a lot of cool things to be considered.
Are we ready to move on to the next concept?
Sure.
Erica?
Well, the next concept was this concept for the, what we're calling the Chicken Creek Greenway. This greenway really can provide opportunities for trails, recreation, additional stormwater management functions. And then there is a definite linkage to the National Wildlife Refuge and the Cedar Creek Trail that is currently planned. This greenway can also provide a good buffer between residential and industrial uses, especially along that northern area bounded by Shoals and Elbert and Edie, if that were to be an industrial area. Next slide. So also-
Words matter. I don't think anybody wants industrial.
Employment. Sorry.
Thank you. Light industrial is good, employment is good. Light industrial, I mean, we're not wanting, let's not confuse anybody that we're having heavy industry, that we're going to have some steel foundry up there.
Yeah.
The Park and Market Campus.
Exactly.
Like that, yeah.
So we introduced to the community some, the notion of active transportation and making sure that there's going to be connections between, you know, our, our local, like, local parks, green spaces, schools, and employment areas, so we can encourage people to get around by walking and biking. Next slide.
Can I, can I pipe in on that slide real quick, too? Because there, there was actually a lot of really rich conversation on this slide, and the same comment Doug made, this was just a, some ideas from the consultants. But we had a lot of conversations around dreaming big about what this, this trail system could look like, how it connects not just to neighborhood to neighborhood, but through neighborhoods and through the different amenities within Sherwood. And why wouldn't we have a trail on both sides of the greenway instead of just one? So, you know, communities on both sides can use it. So there, there was a lot of conversation around this, and it was definitely a very high priority for the, the committee that we have these green spaces and we connect them with trails.
So like I said, we've had three meetings so far with our CAC and our CAC, and the fourth meeting is approaching in early September. Once we have introduced the TAC and our CAC to our six planning concepts, and once we synthesize all that information, we plan to have an open house in early October. I don't know what that open house is going to look like yet, whether it's going to be online or in person, but it's definitely something that we do have scheduled to happen in early October. We have sent a mailing, a mail to all property owners in Sherwood West about this project. We sent that letter to property owners in late April, early June. We also have an interested parties list that people can sign up for. Currently to date, we have 70 people on that list, and we also have a project webpage that is continuously updated with, you know, packet information and information about this project. And then I have also forwarded to council recent emails that I have received about tonight's work session, and those emails came from Mark Farah, Hella and Dick Betts, and Dennis Christian. Next slide. So, you know, again, here's the project timeline, and we are scheduled to complete this project by the end of next spring, early summer. So to date, I know that we've talked a lot kind of about this just a a couple slides ago, but this is like a little summary of what we've heard from the CAC and the TAC. To date, we have heard support for, you know, additional employment uses in that northern section of the Sherwood West area. And there is support for neighborhood serving uses. But there wasn't a consensus on where this should be located or how large it should be, and that, once again, is that little particular parcel that was just north of the high school shown on that previous slide. There is supportive uses for, you know, wine gateway, some, you know, tourist steam excuse. You know, or a special, you know, design concept for that area along Highway 99. And then we have, we always hear that residents are always very supportive of preserving open spaces and trail connections, and we heard that, you know, it's utilizing the Chicken Creek Greenway, maybe there should be two trail systems, you know, along that connection.
So Russell has a, has his hand up?
Tim.
Russell?
Russell.
I was, I had my hand up earlier, but I think I clapped instead of raising my because my hand went away, and I was like, so I have comments about everything tonight, but first I just want to talk about Sherwood West. And I've gone back and forth with Julia over this over the past couple of weeks about Sherwood West, and it was, I feel so strongly about this relook when, way back when, when, where it was just a rumor that the district was going to, you know, locate the high school maybe over there. Immediately, I think I told Joe and I told probably Julie, I told, you know, somebody, I said, you know, we need to relook at Sherwood West. If that high school plants itself in the middle or bottom one-third of that, that's really going to change the dynamics of that whole area over there. And I also feel strongly about, you know, encourage the committee, like the mayor said, encourage the committee, you know, dream big. You know, I've been to some communities where, I mean, some of those neighborhoods in the Bend, Sun River redmond area feel like they laid out the trails so that they were the coolest trails they could possibly get, and then they put in the neighborhoods after that. And so when you go into some of those neighborhoods, it's amazing, the trails and the little things, the little benches and the little, the cool tree that they went around because the tree was so cool, they were not going to take it down. I hope we focus on, you know, some of the great natural features and, you know, high as the sky, you know, we could do a cool bridge over Chicken Creek. We could, I don't know. But I hope the committee is like, hey, let's not get too boxed in. And Erica, I would encourage the, I know the consultant wants to help us nail things down, but I hope we don't nail things down too tightly. Let's come up with a, a big list of what could it possibly be? The Parks Board, for example, has talked about, you know, a, a Snyder Park, Sunset Park equal or kind of cooler, different focused huge park over there. That's more nature, more rocks, more bouldering, more whatever it is, you know, with tree swings and, you know, not to, I mean, we love, we love the park we have, but this would be like the other jewel on the other side of the city, and it would be equally stunning. I mean, the views from up in that park at the right, right time of day is amazing. And, you know, just yesterday, I was driving down Sunset. And it's, it's not time for the leaves to turn yet. That's like my favorite road to take when the leaves turn. But even yesterday, at that 2:30 in the afternoon, I'm driving down Sunset, and I thought, oh my gosh, this is one of the most beautiful roads because of the way it was laid out and all these trees and, you know, and people were walking and jogging and wa, and had their pets out. It was great. I hope we focus on the livability of what's the best way to, you know, to, to plan Sherwood West from that. We definitely want to have intelligent, useful, contemporary, employable employment opportunities. I think retail will find its way into our city no matter what, but I hope we focus on really letting the gates go open. Let's let them have a great time. But I also want to say this, we have gotten a lot of interest from, you know, landowners and companies representing landowners. I totally get that. But you put that huge 80-plus acre campus kind of in the middle, and I think, I think the city, the citizens deserve the right to take a couple steps back and relook at that, because that really was a game changer. When we were on that committee all those years ago, we did Sherwood West preliminary concept plan. We had no idea there was going to be a huge, the huge high school over there. So anyway, kudos to what's going on so far, but really just encourage outside of the box, you know, if we had, you know, because Mayor Mace has such a great job getting tons of money for Washington and Salem, so the, the sky's the limit. What can we do over there? And, you know, let's get some ideas that are just amazing. So that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thanks, Russell. Tim?
So Russell, that was amazing. We need you to come to the next CAC meeting and give that same speech, because that's exactly right. That's dream big. This is just a concept plan. You know, so this is the appropriate time to be dreaming big, so I couldn't agree with you more. So that's it.
Awesome. Let's just be sure that we are looking at the bones of what we need and not just, and this might violate some planning rule or law or whatever, but I don't care. Sherwood West is a space that will grow into in some bucket of years, but Sherwood won't stop there. So are we having the bright bones in place so that when I'm burned up and scattered in the wind, they'll have things in place to do Sherwood Northwest or Sherwood Southwest or whatever happens, because it's, we'll continue to, it will continue to grow over time and whatever that time window is. Let's just be sure to keep of that. So it goes to the people want amenities, every amenity, you know, potentially over there as well, and amenity might have a, a certain need today, but a different need 20 years from now type of stuff. That's all I have.
And I just want to chime into, I like what Counselor Griffin said about dreaming big, but I also want to be mindful of the different types of housing opportunities that are available. I know that's not the focus of tonight, but if we want to be a place where our children can live and where our older population can, can stay in the community that they lived in, we need to diversify our housing. And as Counselor Griffin talked about, Bend, Bend has a great example of some, some very well-planned diversified housing stock. So just be mindful of that as well.
Yeah, yeah, but if you don't zone for, once we have a zone called Cottage Cluster, if we don't implement that zoning, we won't get it. So, Sean?
Yeah, really just going to reiterate what Renee said, but I just wanted to get on, on record for that, just really backing up again, just that other, looking at that other housing, ensuring that we don't have really this just kind of segmented bracket of, of who can live in Sherwood, who can afford to live in Sherwood. I'm, I'm up for the idea of, you know, what brings Sherwood to, are people to Sherwood is our great schools, and I don't want to exclude some of those young couples who might only have that one kid right now, but are going to have two or three or more as they go. And, you know, maybe they're not in a place right now to entirely be able to afford what we have here today, but we want them in, you know, they bring diversity to our community. They bring some, some new blood into our community and really like to see some of that. And then the flip side, like Renee said, and you all have heard me say this in the past, as well as our empty nesters, I don't like the idea that, you know, basically folks in in Sherwood are like Menudo, you know, the kids graduate, they turn 18 and they're gone, and then the families leave as well, and then they're replaced by a younger couple, you know, I mean, I want to, I want to make sure that if people want to live here in Sherwood after their kids have left, that we have an opportunity for them to do so, and, and, and that, my- That we have an opportunity for them to do so and 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 that in my mind. Um you know, looks like more single level homes, more maybe three-bedroom homes, something like that. That allows people to downsize a little bit, so um you know, and again, that's part of planning. Um you know, we don't have that in Sherwood here. Let's look to the future to that and see if we can do that, so that's it.
So so Sean, for the thirty-somethings and maybe even the forty-somethings, certainly the twenty-somethings watching this. Um is it took me upset, took me aback, I had to. Go into my archives, um the Menudo comment means.
Menudo, sure, yeah. I don't know if anybody knows that one of the original boy bands in the eighties where uh you reached a certain age, I think it was maybe sixteen or so. I don't know how it was and you were uh kicked out of the band and replaced with a younger person, you know, and I kind of see that with our housing here is as soon as. Our students get to a certain age and they go off and graduate, then we lose the parents as well, you know, and so we're losing that. You know, just we're losing so much, we're losing part of our culture here in Sherwood. We're losing, you know, just the. Historical experience that people have here, you know, everyone loves to talk about or talk to some of our our old timers in town, you know, what did Sherwood look, used to look like? Six Corners, all these, you know, historical type of things and we're losing a lot of those people, you know, uh out of town once they they just. Can't find the right house for him in in Sherwood, so want to make sure that we're looking out for those folks as well.
Kim?
Yeah, I just uh first of all, Counselor Griffin, you put it wonderfully um that the concept plan that was done for Sherwood West. I think six or seven years ago, you know, of course, was prior to any thought of a high school going there, so this relook. Um process is, I think, very important and I think we need to get through that for sure. Um and keep having those conversations and I did. Understand the Menudo con- con- uh concept that that Sean was talking about because uh I listened to them back in the day. As far as what uh Council Brownson and Council Garland was talking about for the. Housing style types, I am full agreement, I think I've been saying now for five years that. When we plan and of course, it's up to the developers, right? Unless we have zoning in place, they're going to build what people are going to buy. Um but I've long said, we need to have some sort of mixed housing as well for the the same reasons that they. They um talked about the, our kids and the aging population and whatnot, but I think it needs to be planned well where we don't have like one whole section where all. Where we have apartment complexes, which I'm not in favor of, but it's all mixed into the neighborhoods where. If you can live in a duplex or a quadplex. It's in a same neighborhood where there's some single-family homes and and they all look like one, one nice neighborhood that has the trails and the parks nearby and. Whatnot and I'm absolutely opposed to anything. In the style of what's happening at the other end of Roy Rogers, where they're just packed in there, but I know that's a conversation for later days, but that's my input.
Okay, thanks, Kim. Uh Tim, you got a something ahead?
Yeah, I just wanted to add a little bit, I'm, I I agree with uh Sean Sean and Renee about we need. More affordable housing and and housing types, I but I just want to be clear that. I think it's, it's going to be a delicate um process to go through um to really pull that off because we can. Through zoning, say we want these types of housing, but the affordability question is really tough, you know, I was just looking at Zillow over. At a reg units in a four-plex off Cedar Creek, a fifteen-hundred-foot square foot unit that's going for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So finding, so creating the 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 different styles of housing. I think is absolutely spot on, but I think we also have to be thinking about how do we drive the affordability question because that's. That's really the most difficult part, but I think we're a victim of our own success. It's a great place to live. We have great schools. People want to live here. Um when those uh, I don't know if their apartments or condos opened up next to the Y. You know, the school system and their population planning assumed that that would all be. Um you know, couples without kids and single people, well, a bunch of families moved in and had a huge impact on schools and their. And their uh their forecasting for that year, so.
Wasn't the ones by the YMCA, Tim, it was the ones across ninety-nine.
I think it was a combination of both, but yeah, but the, well, it you get my point, you get this and. And uh so and that also brings up, you know, that we have to partner with schools on this and. You know, if at some point twenty years down the road or thirty years down the road, I'm sure what Wes is fully developed. We're tou- we're probably looking at additional, a couple additional great schools over there, you know, based on densities and and what's being driven from the state right now, so we also need to be. Including the school system and and how we plan for that.
Um Doug?
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of uh dovetail on the same line of conversation we've all been having. Um I, you know, definitely agree with all of the previous counselors and and diversifying our housing stock. I think we need. We need to do that. I think we need to be realistic about the affordability question, however, because. Affordability is largely a market-driven factor and you know, the same unit that might. Sell for three hundred thousand dollars in another part of the metro area might sell for four hundred thousand dollars in Sherwood because it's a higher, highly desirable community. So w- we can chase the white whale and and we certainly should, should make those attempts, but we also need to be. Realistic about the the market that we have and and as Tim said, you know, our own previous success. Uh in that we, we're not going to probably be able to be very successful at accommodating. Every income range in in the area, but we can certainly do more than we're doing now.
Kim, your hand still up? Did you have another comment?
Nope.
Okay, awesome. I think that's all the hands on this slide.
Okay, so actually, this is just a great segue because next month on September eighth, we're going to be talking about housing in neighborhood form. And how this all integrates together in Sherwood West, along with transportation and what the key um transportation corridors are and what they should look like. Um Counselor Griffin, I just want to let you know that our Elbert's um design concept, it, you know, really takes an account. What, what do we like about Sunset? And how do we apply those concepts to Elbert Road um to really, you know. Make a a great-looking, livable um accessible uh transportation um corridor.
Eric, if you can make Elbert look like Sunset. We will build a statue and I'll put it in, I'll put it in the mayor's front yard. It's just amazing. That would be so awesome. He's going to have a whole bunch of statues in his front yard, that's what I heard, so.
We, we heard it here first.
I mean, wouldn't that be great? I mean, Erica, think about it. I mean, you drive down Sunset, I mean, just literally. Wait till the leaves fall. I have people who come from North Portland that I know who go all, like on Sunday. They'll get something to eat like a Clancy's and then they'll go down Sunset because of the leaves. It's just stunning. So yeah, I.
You're going somewhere else that, how how stunning it would be when you, when you were to drive by the mayor's house. Erica's statue along with other statues that.
That's.
Are those all behind the statue of the mayor himself or?
I don't know, those statues might be against code, so.
There's already a couple statues in town, so I'm just saying.
Yeah, and you know, I wanted to, one final note, I'll be really fast, that I was, I was thinking about mentioning housing that I was going to give, you know. Take a breath because I know they're gonna, that's in the next meeting and they're going to come back to us and we can all rail on them again about housing. But I agree with everything that you said, uh and and Doug and uh and Tim are right, you know. It is such a great place to live that, you know, you can have this house and this house in two different cities. And a lot of, a big difference in price, so it's not like we want to lower the quality of life in Sherwood to lower the. Cost of housing, so that's really, it's just, you know, how, is there a way to be creative? So um. Complicated, so. It'll be exciting, though. I can't wait to see the next update.
Yeah. And does the um on, you know, we're going to be updating. Our mixed-use standards for, you know, housing over commercial. And should that be, you know, taken into account more so as you're planning that so that there's.
Yes.
Essentially some of the Orenco Station kind of type stuff in parts. Um like the southern part or the, even within the neighborhood part, so that there's that. That corner convenience store slash bakery slash whatever, whatever, within walking distance of neighborhoods, but also. Bigger stuff, because you could have bigger stuff over, you have housing over bigger buildings, but we just haven't seen it our way. So, Tim, your hands up again?
Yeah, I did, uh before we move on to the next subject, uh and this is more just some. Some comments for those in the community that might be miss, listening to this conversation about planning for Sherwood West. And I just want to make sure people understand, just because we're doing a plan right now, doesn't mean you're going to see bulldozers. Um over there next week and houses going up. Um this is, this is something we have to do as part of. Of managing our our urban reserves that are around us and outside the urban growth boundary. Um and as I always say, if you don't have a plan, someone will plan it for you. And there's a lot of uh forces outside our community that would would love to see more development around us, so we need to be ahead of that curve. And in addition to that, um the state and Metro have slowly eroded our ability to control that. That pace and the planning that's coming in and and a lot of people out there might remember. Uh we brought, we voted three times against bringing the Brookman area into the city. The citizens said no three times. Uh and the state decided to take that ability for us to vote on annexations away, so it's important that we plan, that's why we're planning. It doesn't mean things are going to start growing over there immediately, so I just. And and I'm just saying that for people out there that, if they jump into this conversation, just kind of understand where we're at.
Thanks, Tim. Okay, Erica, part two of our.
Yeah, yes, I'm actually going to lead this next part with Erica chiming in and and first of all, great conversation and great input on the Sherwood West. So now we're going to pivot to the mid-cycle urban growth boundary expansion. Uh at first, I just want to um I guess remind or bring the council up to speed. On our residential need based on our housing needs analysis. Um our current estimated number of units in the existing city limits. And Brookman is seven thousand two hundred and twenty. Um we have a projected need in the year twenty thirty-nine of. Eight thousand nine hundred and forty-nine um which. Uh so that's seventeen hundred twenty-nine new units needed. We have a capacity in the city and Brookman of one thousand twenty-one or one thousand one hundred and twenty-one. Again, these are all estimates, it's not going to be exact. So we're not going to ultimately land on the exact um figure, but this is what the um housing needs analysis said, so um with. This city and Brookman, we have a deficit of six hundred and eight units over the twenty-year planning um horizon. Um and that's important to know and understand because when we do. A UGB mid-cycle ask, which is what we're talking about right now, it's got to be based on what you can demonstrate the need is. So our need in our H and A is six hundred and eight units, so at ten to twelve units per acre, taking out right away. We um believe that we could justify for housing about seventy-six to sixty, sixty-three to seventy-six acres. Um for residential purposes, we probably could justify. Slightly more than that because we also have the jobs housing balance piece, but I just wanted to kind of start there so everybody understands. That we're, we're talking about, you know, a small number of acres.
So Julia, a question on that, uh in the last, let's just say, four years, how how many houses a year are we averaging being built?
So I did, I ran a a number and the five-year average is about thirty. Three units per year.
Okay, yeah, because I was just doing some simple math on that seventeen hundred over twenty years, that's like eighty-six a year, so. That's even assuming faster growth than what we're currently experiencing.
Right. Um and just FYI, we have um currently approved lots. Not there, varying stages, but we have uh two hundred and ninety-nine lots between stuff happening in the city and stuff happening in Brookman. That um are not being built on yet, but are in the process of being um. The constructed, the the infrastructure is being constructed, so um that's going to. Give a lot of building permits, um the ability to go through the system, um right, so just to keep that in mind. Um so the mid-cycle proposal, um it's limited to a specific quantifiable community need. And like I said, um you know, we can demonstrate the need for um, you know, probably, you know, in the sixty to seventy range. Of acres for housing, um and then we probably can argue for a little bit more with the employment balance and roads and parks, so. Erica and I were estimating, you know, a hundred and fifty plus or minus acres we could probably ask for. Um it also needs to meet specific criteria and have an adopted Title XI compliant concept plan and. Remember, you know, when Erica was talking about the current concept um plan is not a hundred percent Title XI compliant. And proposals are due to Metro by December thirteenth and they have actually asked to see. The plans and proposals about a month earlier than that. Um so that's kind of just. Orienting you to the timeline and and explaining why we need direction tonight to really allow us to move forward if that's what we were to do.
Doug, you got your hand up?
Uh yeah, I, is there, I I've heard this, so I want to be clear maybe for everyone that it should be clear. Is it true that there is specific criteria related to the mid-cycle proposal that is on? Not part of a normal cycle ask?
Yes, that is.
Can you elaborate?
Yeah, yeah, and and Erica, I mean, you need to, to help me out because I haven't done a side-by-side comparison, but generally, like with the mid-cycle ask. It's, it's. Unique to to your jurisdiction and your specific needs, um and you have to be able to demonstrate that. I I think this might actually be it, but there's, I mean, it's at the, the legislative ask, it's region-wide. It's looking at the entire metropolitan area and what that need is. And whether or not that need can be met within the entire metropolitan area, so you're not, if we were to do an ask in the mid, in the mid-cycle piece. Um or the legislative piece, we're not having to be bound by what our H and A specifically says. Um and then um. Uh sorry, I'm Erica, am I, what am I? No, no, you're spot on, Julia. Uh we are, you know, for this, for a mid-cycle ask, we are really constrained by our H and A. And what our needed housing is over the next, you know, twenty-year period.
Is tho- are those proposals under B on the current slide? Are those specific to this particular mid-cycle ask? Or are those general criterias that always apply in an ask?
These are going to be specific to the mid-cycle ask.
Okay, so those are additional criteria and conditions that would not apply in twenty twenty-four, let's say.
I, that is correct. But I, I, yeah, so just a reminder, so this is kind of going over the proposal and so. Metro determines whether or not each proposal demonstrates a need. Um. If it's determined that there's a need, a city um has to demonstrate the following. Acknowledge local buildable lands inventory, which we have um with our housing needs analysis. Um we also have to demonstrate the housing plan and the proposal is like to, likely to be built in fewer than ten years. I have that checked and I'm not sure exactly why I checked that, honestly. Um the city has taken action and investments in centers, corridors, station communities and main streets. That's essentially saying that. We've got plans and and we're kind of moving things in that direction. Um. The city has implemented best practices for preserving and increasing the supply and diversity of affordable housing in um the existing boundary. Um and they actually specify, you say, for example, um financial incentives, um. Zoning, right, you know, regulations, things like that for that best practices, and that is something that we have not yet done. Um the city has taken actions in the existing boundary and proposed expansion area that will advance Metro's six desired outcomes. Um and that's. Yeah, I think we could probably make some arguments there. Um the land proposed must be in a designated urban reserve area. Um and so. With the criteria, kind of what we've told you about with Sherwood West, um and where we're at, um. This slide is identifying what we would need to do in order to submit a request, um and keeping in mind that's by um November. So we, we need to determine that there's an area within the existing Sherwood West preliminary concept plan that is unlikely to change through the relook process. And the reason for that is because it's already gone through an extensive public process um and been adopted, and if we were to rely on kind of. Assumptions that we're in the process of making through the Sherwood West, it would essentially, we feel be disingenuous to the public process. Um we need to agree on an area and an acreage, so like I said, Erica and I were thinking one fifty plus or minus. But where would that be? Where do we, where would council feel comfortable? If they did feel comfortable, isn't going to change, where would that look like? And then, once we have that, we need to develop. If they did feel comfortable, isn't gonna change, where would that look like? And then once we have that, we need to develop a mini concept plan that is Title eleven compliant. Um, and that would need to be adopted by um, council by November sixteenth, based on Metro's request to have it um prior to the December thirteenth deadline. We would also need to continue coordinating with agency partners and service districts to um, get service provider letters. And then we'd also need to have a conversation with council um, to determine a plan for implementing the best housing, the best practices for for preserving and increasing the supply and diversity of affordable housing. Um, and then submitting that by December thirteenth. So can we do it? I'm gonna, I'm I'm sort of stealing the thunder of Erica. Yes, we can, but I'm gonna have Erica just briefly kind of talk about, and this is listing right there, all the 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 multiple things that we have going on that that planning is currently working on. Um, that would have to slide. So Erica, do you want to just briefly talk about that?
Sure. So uh, planning here, we have a couple of projects on our plate. As you can see from this slide, we have the Sherwood West relook project. We have our residential design standards that we are currently in the process of developing and going through the adoption process for those. We would like to have those adopted by the end of this year so we can do a little pilot test of the standards before we actually implement um, our new housing choices by next June of next year. We also have the comprehensive plan adoption um, that we plan to kick off this fall. In addition to the comprehensive plan, we also need to adopt our a new refreshed E O A. Um, and then when it comes to implementing the comprehensive plan, we are looking at, you know, uh, that additional work when it comes to annexation criteria, housing strategies and, you know, other important action items that we have listed. And of course, we always have our economic development support that, you know, our our planning staff you know, provides the team here. Um, so you know, can we pull it uh, a concept, a mini concept plan together for an area in Sherwood West? Sure, we certainly can do so, but we also um, need to think about uh, you know, the other projects on our plates and what what items we might need to, you know, take a brief pause on.
Um, Doug, your hands up and then Sean. You're muted.
Is this the end of the presentation? I don't want to like derail like there. Are we going to?
Okay. Yeah, basically that that's leading to our questions of should we move forward with a mid-cycle proposal? Um, and so and if so, where? So.
So can you, can you go back? I have a couple of points here. Can you go back? Uh, one more. Uh, sorry, one more. I don't remember. Yeah, this one. So um, it's, this is interesting to me because I I definitely feel like we would have challenges around um, B three, B four and B five, um, even if we were to go for an ask. And then also interesting to me in that on B two. Um, many of the communications we've received from the one of the principal developers in in the proposed area. They themselves say that it won't be built in less than ten years. So it seems like that alone would not meet the criteria if 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 the developer is saying they can't do it um, in that timeframe. Um, moving on to the can we do it slide? Um, you know, I look at this and I go, okay, Sherwood West relook, residential design standards, implementation of H P two thousand one, comprehensive plan adoption, comprehensive plan implementation. Every single one of those is a critical informative piece to how Sherwood West should develop. Why on earth would we move forward? Would we delay the implementation of any of those five things in order to rush forward on an ask? When we don't even know what we're asking for, because these five things are gonna inform what it is we want to ask for and how we want that area to develop. I mean, granted, we need to have this conversation, but there's nothing could be so clear as to answer the question before us tonight as as this slide in my book. I could speak on this for twenty minutes, but I know we're at uh, a press for time, so I will just leave it at that. Thank you.
Thanks, Doug. Uh, Sean?
Just wanted to clarify for everybody that on that last slide, the the um, the one you were saying that can we do it? Yeah. E O A, economic opportunity uh, analysis. Is it economic or employment?
Economic.
Okay, just wanted to clear that up for for myself and then anybody else. So, so um, I have more to say on on this, but I'll let other people talk.
Okay, um, Kim, I think you were next.
Yeah, I couldn't uh, agree with Doug more on the camp, on the can we do it slide. I mean, all that whole list is used to inform our decisions on on Sherwood West. But if we could go back a slide. Yes. So that determine that there is an area within the existing Sherwood West preliminary content plan that is unlikely to change through the relook process. I think that's a huge thing. Um, obviously, we don't want to make assumptions of what the current C A C and T A C are going to propose. But if we lock them into something, then then they can't even make changes to the ask that we potentially could do. Um, so I think we haven't from early, from the first presentation, we haven't had a lot of input from the CAC. It seems like they've just been you know, right now in the current where they're being presented a lot of information and um, not and having some robust conversations, but not uh, making any suggested changes at this point. So I think the relook process is kind of, you know, in the baby step still, and we need, we need to get that that completed. I also um, am concerned about our staff time um, and and what's what's on their plate. And of course, we have such great staff that if we were to go forward with this, I know it would get get done, but I don't think we can even um, accomplish all this required um, to put in a mid-cycle ask. So that's my two cents.
Okay, thanks. Uh, Kim slash Rebecca. Russell?
Does it say Rebecca?
Yeah.
Yeah.
She was in a job interview on my.
And and Sean was, uh, a while ago, he was his wife's name, but we overlooked that. So. Uh, so I I had a chance to talk to, you know, Julie about this quite a bit, uh, this very issue. And I recall way back when you know, when we found out, when I found out I was on planning commission, the high school was gonna go into that spot. I remember talking to Julia and said, wow, this is the right time. Let's get some land around the high school. Let's put in some neighborhood so that the high school kids have lights and streets. So there's eyes and neighbors and they're watching and they're watching out for our kids. And uh, I thought, I think it's a great idea. I I I just wanted to say from my point of view, I can't speak for everybody else. I am absolutely pro when it's the right time. We should go for it. But I feel like the high school going in that spot really necessitated us relooking at the whole thing. Not only that, but with this particular council on which I wholeheartedly support, you know, we have a slightly greater emphasis on economic development. So we want a better balance of that in Sherwood West. We want it to be amazing. So why would we rush it? So I'm definitely not anti-growth. I am pro doing it the right way. I was reading uh, when, this is when the two thousand eighteen, those four cities that, you know, did the, did they ask was King City and Wilsonville and, you know, and Bob Stacy, who's a member of Metro, he said, he said at the meeting when they approved it, he said, I am no enthusiast for urban growth boundary expansions, you know, but if you have to do it, you know, do it right. Uh, and I was talking to Julie about this. I'm like, you know, when we get all, everything kind of ironed out and we have a really good plan, we could do a really big ask. It doesn't have to be piecemeal. It could be like Doug's thumbs up. I mean, when we're ready for it, we go, we go for it. So um, I I say we pause as well, so.
Thanks, Russell. Uh, Renee?
I'm all for, you know, making sure we have things in line and that we're ready and such. If we do not do a ask at this point in time, then the next one is when?
Twenty four. And it's the normal routine. So that, you know, the other narrative, I can't remember if people, so this mid-cycle thing is a brand new thing. Um, that's why it's kind of, we're all chasing a little bit to understand what it means and but the the normal ask is every six years historically, and that will be in twenty four.
And and just to clarify in that, it would be in another three years and twenty four for residential ask. We can theoretically ask for a a jobs ask anytime for once a year. So there's nothing restricting us from doing a jobs ask in.
And and it's not just jobs. Any year you can do a non-residential ask. That's how most schools happen.
Yep.
Okay. And if we were to wait then to do a a big ask in two twenty four, that's another three years and that puts any development, development out even longer. Uh, so we we have this large high school. This is gonna be sitting out there vacant.
The the high school's full, actually. Just for clarification, but um, so Renee, what 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 are you, what's your thoughts?
Um, I would be in favor of a mid-cycle ask.
Thanks, Renee. Sean?
Yeah, I'll just be brief. So I think uh, most people have shared uh, similar thoughts to mine. But I think, you know, I was on council in twenty eighteen, I guess it was when we looked at this last time for the expansion and you know, the the big things we talked about at that time, uh, reasons why we rescinded our a letter of interest to Metro at the time. A big one was comprehensive plan. We wanted to have that done and in place before we moved on. And we also wanted to have more conversations, better relationship with our school district, better partnership with them. And I don't think either of those things are in place right now. So um, that having been said, I just do not consider this to be a good time for this ask right now. So I'm not really in favor of it at this time.
Okay. Thanks, Sean. Uh, Tim?
So uh, um. I think everyone um, is kind of addressed kind of where my head is. I'm not in in favor and ask at this time. I I did have a couple of questions for Julie. I just wanted to run through and then a couple of comments. Um, Julia, if you've worked with Metro quite a bit and you work with the staff over there. If if we weren't even considering mid-cycle ask without being done with our concept, comprehensive plan update, which by the way, they gave us the grant, the money to do. And not done with our com- our comprehensive plan, I'm sorry, our our concept plan and our conference of plan update. How are they gonna view that? They were coming in and asking when we're in the middle of the planning process. What's your sense on that?
Obviously, I can't speak for them, but I think it would be, if I were in their shoes, I would have a lot of questions about about whether or not it was ready, whether or not it was right. Um, generally, Metro council doesn't like to expand the urban growth boundary as it is and and again, just by my perception. Um, and I think that they tend to try to find um reasons to say no. Um, and I think that right now there are probably a lot of reasons to say no.
Thanks, Julia. And then I I guess I'll end it with this. Um. I Doug, I think you nailed it. Um, in in your comments in terms of we have to get this planning done so we could, we can have uh, be really informed about what the community wants and what we want that area to look like out there. And Russell, I love your enthusiasm and I agree wholeheartedly. And let's dream big and make sure we get it right and have something that's awesome. Um, that our community is proud of. Uh, you know, I say it all the time. We have an awesome community today because of the the yeoman work that uh, people in our shoes did twenty and thirty years ago to plan for this. Um, and if you notice Keith, I'm mentioning a timeframe that's before you, just pointing that out. Um, I'm just kidding, but the uh, but I think, I think it's really important um, that we get this right so that it informs future planning departments and future councils as as we grow that out. And then I I just want to talk about what's changed in the last five to ten years too, in terms of the the regulatory environment around this. And and I mentioned the Brookman expansion about how we lost our ability to let our voters vote on annexations. And that's one of the reasons for me at least that these U G B expansion asks are so important because it's it's a key point where we can throttle growth at the city. And with the passage of uh, H P two thousand one and um, other pressures that are out there to from uh, from big lobbying groups and the home builders, et cetera. Uh, I'm not sure, I I I think our our ability to to control this is gonna continue to erode. And so we have to be really careful that we have a really great plan in place. And then I just, I'm just want to throw an idea out. In our charter, it actually says that voters can vote on annexations up or down. And as I mentioned before, the state took that right away. I I want, I am so concerned about making sure that we are doing the right thing by our voters. I I would, when we are ready to do an ask, I think that's something we need to run by the voters, even though it's not binding. I think it's, we we need to do work to make sure our community understands what we're doing, why we're doing the ask, that they agree with it. And we should consider, you know, in the next round, maybe even putting it on the ballot, even though it's not binding. But that way we know that they, the voters have something to say about it. They have some input.
So Tim, when you're commenting on that for residential ask, the whole ask of.
I think res- residential for sure, cuz I think that that I think most of the, most of the concerns I'm hearing from the community, um, you know, in my little Facebook poll, I got gosh, I probably got two hundred comments back and a lot of them revolved around infrastructure and cars and and, you know, having all those people here, what's that's gonna do to the city in terms of traffic and stuff like that? And and most of it revolved around that. But so for sure, yeah.
Thanks, Tim. Um, I remember when Metro did our last residential expansion, which was Brookman, there was no plan, no plan was required. Um, it was a interesting, interesting days. And then the community didn't want it. And then the laws changed and got annexed and we had a plan and um, so um, I'm just rambling a bit. Um, we're over time. I think we've got the feedback from council that we need to finish what we're working on. Um, and plan for twenty twenty four. Um, and what that should look like with smart planning, smart phasing, good community engagement, um, good economic balance for sustainability. And um, yeah. All righty. Anything else for the good of the order before we adjourn the work session and go to our city council meeting?
Thank you all for your feedback tonight.
I just want to say I really appreciate the efforts and time of staff in going through and putting together this presentation and um, and I'm sure you're very happy that we're not asking you to derail a bunch of work that's mid, mid, mid-process and do different work instead. Uh, but I know you would have gladly done it if that was the direction um, we're giving you. And I just, I I know that even doing this to prepare for this and prepare us all is is extra work on your plate. So I definitely appreciate the efforts.
Yeah, here, here. Thanks, Julia. Thanks, Erica. Um.